Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 4th, 2019 Planning Board meeting. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Weinstein, Mr. Scoboe, Mr. Stagg, Mr. Michael Julius. Uh, Mr. Peason?
Present.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Deb?
Here.
Minimum in the pony?
Here.
I have Delphore?
Here.
Chair's right.
Here. Okay, we're good. So before we get started, I just want to recognize that it's Mr. Peason's birthday, and he has decided to spend it with us this evening. Happy birthday, Rob.
Thank you.
I'll give him extra chocolate.
So we don't seem to have anything except going right down to an application, so we So this evening, we have LD Construction LLC, otherwise known as Hillsborough Village Center, and file number 18-PB-17-MSPV. Good evening, Counselor.
Good evening, ladies, I should say, all gentlemen of the Board. My name is Michael O'Grohanek. I'm an attorney at Savo Shaw Gillespie O'Grohanek &amp; Fisher in Somerville. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, LD Construction LLC, again, for the Hillsborough Village Center project. I'm going to give a summary of the application, which we're seeking preliminary and final site plan approval with bulk variances and waivers necessary to construct a mixed-use development consisting of three mixed-use commercial residential buildings fronting on 206 and nine single-use multifamily buildings on the rear of the site with an associated community building and pool amenities. The subject property is located in the Town Center TC Zone and Mixed Use Inclusionary Overlay District. The subject properties are adjacent to the Bottle King property to the south, to the south of the Bottle King property. The total project area for this application is 8.828 acres, and the application proposes consolidating the existing lots four through 11, which are historically residential uses, into one tax lot to serve the proposed multifamily and retail development. In addition, the applicant proposes a parking easement on .190 acre portion of Lot 12.01, that's the lot to the north, I should say to the northeast, which is Block, Lot 12.01, Block 178, for a small parking area, which will service the below-proposed residential development. Lot 12.01, Block 178, looking at the exhibit, it's the property to the north, is the recently renovated Amwell Shopping Center. That property is also owned by the applicant. The applicant seeks the final preliminary and final site plan to create a total of 191 apartment units and 28,000 square feet of retail space. This project provides 46 affordable housing units and 145 market rate units. The project proposes to have a single driveway access to Route 206 and a driveway connection to the existing commercial development on Block 178, Lot 12.01, to the rear or to the east of the project site for the purposes of, to facilitate pedestrian and vehicular circulation. In accordance with 188-113-5K, the TC Town Center District of the Land Development Ordinance proposes the Mixed Use Inclusionary Overlay District by providing for the construction of the affordable multifamily housing in the Town Center District. Project is also consistent with the settlement with the township regarding the township's co-re requirements as imposed by the Fair Share Housing Act and as implemented through the Superior Court. As Mr. Ford will explain in detail, a total of 13 separate buildings are proposed, including three mixed-use buildings. Those buildings are fronting Route 206 with retail space on the first floor and residential units on the second and third floors, nine three-story residential apartment buildings with garages to the rear, and a community building with a pool. The applicant further seeks amended site plan approval for the existing commercial development, which is, again, the Amwell Shopping Center to the east, so as to allow approximately 20 parking spaces, there's a little sliver of land that they intend to use for 20 parking spaces and a trash enclosure, which would serve the proposed residential development, not the commercial development. Such amended site plan approval for the existing commercial development on Lot 12.01 also includes vehicular and pedestrian connections between the existing commercial development to the below residential development. By way of variances, the applicant seeks a C variance relief from the maximum height of the three mixed-use buildings fronting on 206. The permitted height is 45 feet and a height of three stories, and where we have 49 feet is proposed for the buildings, again, fronting 206 due to the grade of 206 in the front of the property. The applicant also seeks a variance from maximum building footprint and length as to the existing Amwell Shopping Center on Lot 12.01, where 20,000 square feet of maximum building footprint is allowed and 200-foot maximum building length are allowed. What's existing is 20,292 feet, uh, square feet and 212 feet, again, existing conditions. Another existing condition for the Amwell Shopping Center is a maximum of five feet is required for front yard setbacks, and 171.57 feet is provided, again, an existing condition from that historic shopping center use. By way of design waivers, a waiver is requested from the Land Development Ordinance, Section 188-175-D2, for the windows on the retail. The requirement is that a maximum of 75% retail window, and the sill should be 26 to 36 inches off the ground. Our architect and our applicant is proposing all windows on the front facade, 100% of window, 0% off, 0 inches off the ground on the parking lot side, and in excess of 36 inches on the Route 206 side of the proposed retail building. A waiver is also requested from the LDO, Section 188-175-G4, for the proposed site lighting, which uses current LED technology with 15-foot mounting height with up to 80-foot pole spacing rather than 12-foot high mounting height with 60-foot pole spacing. The Land Development Ordinance, 188-175-G3, indicates that, quote, "In parking lots post-height may not be extended or high mass lighting may be required to obtain safe lighting levels at the direction of the township," unquote. Therefore, with a greater mounting height, a greater spacing of poles is suitable and requested. The last waiver is to allow proposed parking five feet off of the northern and southern property lines, where Section 188-68C requires that all parking lots with 10 or more spaces have a 30-foot wide buffer with the adjoining streets and property lines. There are also some architectural waivers that we're requesting. These include the ASD overlay zone, 188-175-C1B, to allow a roof slope of a 4 to 12 ratio, where the minimum is a 6 to 12 ratio as required by ordinance, Section 188-175-E4, to allow a facade with more than three materials, textures, and colors, and Section 188-175-1LH, to allow standard concrete or asphalt walkways where pigmented rock walkways are required. With me tonight, I have Mike Ford, our professional engineer, Jay Troutman, our traffic engineer, Rob Larson, our architect, and Art Bernard, our planner. I also have David Gardner here on behalf of the applicant, and Tom Offenord, who is our environmental consultant, who are available to answer questions, but I don't intend to introduce them as witnesses unless the Board has any questions from them. Unless there are any additional legal questions, we've submitted our notice in our publication, I would ask the Board swear in Mr. Ford to explain the variances.
(inaudible)
Yes, I do. Michael Ford, F-O-R-D, with Bencliff Engineering Associates, 32 Brower Lane, Hillsborough, New Jersey. I've appeared before this Board previously.
Anything has changed in your stature since last night?
No, it hasn't.
Okay. So unless there's any objections, we will accept Mr. Ford.
Okay. Here we go. Okay. Perhaps we can enter the exhibits first.
Yep.
I have both electronically, I have, I have seven pages, both electronically, 11-by-17 handouts, which I thought would be convenient for the Board if you didn't want to twist your neck turning around looking at things. And then I also have hard boards, full-size, that we can introduce. And perhaps let me just have one to...
(inaudible). A1.
I'm gonna, is it okay if I mark the boards?
Yeah. Okay. But for purposes of the record, we're gonna mark what's being handed out by Mr. O'Grohanek as A1. Mr. Ford, would you indicate, for the purposes of the record, what A1 represents?
A1 is a series of seven pages. It'll be identical to the illustrations that I have on this screen electronically. Page one is the existing conditions. Page two is the proposed conditions as submitted as part of the application, which is a rendered version of the site plan. Page three is a vicinity map we're going to utilize to illustrate the vehicular and pedestrian circulation for not only the site but in the area, how to get to and from this site. Page four is, again, an illustration of the existing, and perhaps maybe I go through it electronically too while I'm doing it. Page four is an illustration of the pedestrian movement areas, and I will refer to that when I describe some additions that we're planning to implement to the plans after receiving the review memorandums from the staff. Page five is an illustration of a stamped pavement crosswalk that we plan to implement at all the crosswalks within the community. This is a stamped pavement colorized to enhance the view of the pedestrian crosswalks. Page six is, again, an overall site rendition, very similar to page two, with the exception that we're illustrating on this plan some additional landscaping that we are willing to propose after, again, reviewing staff comments. And also on this illustration, we show what the future cross-section of Route 206 would look like once the Town Center cross-section is implemented, perhaps when DOT is no longer in control of Route 206 and the town has control. And then finally, the last page, page seven, is, again, an overall site where I've just highlighted where the underground waste water, or stormwater management facilities would be located. So I'll go back to page one.
We're gonna mark this A1 in its entirety.
Thank you. Okay, page one illustrates the existing conditions, which are the eight lots fronting Route 206, which is running along, parallel to the bottom of the page. North is the right side of the page. South is the left side of the page. Just to the north of the site, you see a large building. That's the location of what I would refer to as the Bottle King site. And then directly across from this site would be the driveway access to the Starbucks and what was previously known as outside the Stop &amp; Shop Shopping Center. That's directly across from our site at the bottom of the page. To the rear of the site is Lot 12.01, which the applicant also owns and is part of this application only because there's an awkward sliver of land at the back of Lot 12.01, which for all intents and purposes will become part of this overall project, and will also service to provide for a driveway access connection between the two projects. And you'll see when I go to the proposed condition how that functions. So that's part of the application. And then off-site, not part of the application, but in the vicinity, is the township-owned, I'll say, Park &amp; Ride, which is now, for all intents and purposes, an off-site parking facility for high school drivers, and that has a bus stop in it. And then directly across the street on Amwell Road is the Hillsborough Post Office. What we've also illustrated on this plan is just to the south of our site, and this is off-site, not part of the application, we've illustrated in color a professional office building, which we understand secured Planning Board approval and actually began construction, and that would include a new driveway access to Route 206, parking along our southerly boundary just off-site of our site, and a professional building there. And as was stated on the introduction, these eight lots would all be consolidated into one lot as part of this application, and then there would be an access easement through Lot 12.01 to service for the pedestrian and vehicular access, as well as, and that would be a cross-access easement, so traffic could go in both directions. And then over the area where the proposed parking is shown at the rear, or little sliver of land just in back of our Lot Four, there would be a parking access easement implemented. And before I go to the next exhibit, I just would like to highlight all these existing structures that are along Route 206 now. I'm sure you're likely familiar with, several of them are in disrepair. In fact, I think some of them are, been highlighted with the red X by the construction department as unsafe structure. All of those structures would come down. All eight existing driveways would go away, and I'll go to the second exhibit now, the proposed condition. We're proposing just one access on Route 206, and that's directly across, and this is page two, directly across from the access to the Stop &amp; Shop Shopping Center. That access, we have a DOT permit pending, that we've made that application to DOT. They have jurisdiction over Route 206. That driveway access would include a right-in if you're headed southbound on Route 206, and a right-out exiting our site, as well as a left-turn lane-in if you're headed northbound on Route 206. It does not include a left-out of the site. So with regards to how you would exit this site and travel north on Route 206, I'll go back to the west or rear of the site. We're proposing this driveway connection between this project and the existing Amwell Mall site. That would be a fully functional two-way traffic access aisle and would facilitate access and exiting from this site to Amwell Road, where you could make a right and head toward the Amwell Road, Route 206 traffic light. Also has an existing driveway access from the Amwell Road, or Amwell Mall, to the existing Hillsborough Township Park &amp; Ride facility. With regards to, I'll go to utilities, there are existing public sewer and water available. There's a 16-inch main in 206, a 12-inch main in Amwell Road. We've made contact with New Jersey American Water. We provided on the plans a layout for utility access in connection with a water main connection to the existing facility on Route 206. And with regards to public sewer, there's existing public sewer actually traversing in front of those existing dwellings that would all be removed, and that drains in a south, southerly direction, and we would connect to that existing public sewer, and that would service all of the proposed structures. With regards to the structures themselves, 13 in total, one recreational facility, which is directly opposite our entrance driveway off of Route 206, and then along Route 206, there are three mixed-use buildings. This is in strict conformance with the overlay zone that was adopted in May of last year with regards to these properties, which specifically requires 28,000 square feet of retail space with buildings along Route 206, the retail space being on the first floor, and then the second and third floors being residential use. And then, in keeping with the Town Center vision, the maximum, not just the minimum setback, but a maximum setback of those buildings from Route 206. So the buildings are located as close as they are to Routes 206 in order to comply with that Town Center vision and that zone, and it would provide for, I'll say, a downtown streetscape with a walk, sidewalk all along the frontage along Route 206, which would connect to the existing sidewalk at the traffic signal where it exits the Bottle King site and also has an entrance to the Stop &amp; Shop site. And then the rear of these three buildings along Route 206 would have retail frontage on the onsite side, if you will, or the west side of those buildings, with a large, wider sidewalk and parking in back of those buildings. So all the backing, parking would be in back of those buildings obscured from Route 206, in keeping with that Town Center vision and the overlay zone. The remaining nine buildings are all three-story apartment buildings. These are four rental apartments. In total, 191 units, 46 of which would be affordable housing, which is 24% of the total residential units. All of those apartment buildings would have garages. There's not a garage for every unit, but there's, there's garages along the first floor of these units with a driveway behind it. So that's why you see along the access aisle, this driveways, and then the garages would be just in front of the garages. The parking overall layout and design is in complete compliance with the Residential Site Improvement Standards, but I'll get to, say, one of the review or waivers that's required as part of this application is, while it's in complete compliance with the Residential Site Improvement Standards, the site spaces at 9 by 18 don't comply with the township's 10 by 20 ordinance, 10 by 20 space ordinance, and the 30-foot access aisle required by township, while there's a 24-foot access aisle required by the Residential Site Improvement Standards. So we're requesting a technical waiver for that. Also, with regards to the location of the parking, we've located parking along the north and south boundary, which is five feet from the property line, where there's a section within the ordinance where you have, this is the Hillsborough Township, where you have any parking lot in excess of 10 spaces requires a 30-foot setback. That is relief that's required. Also connected to parking, loading, specifically, there is a requirement that a loading zone be provided. We're suggesting that a waiver is appropriate here in this case. The 28,000-square-foot retail space is really not a large space, if you will, and you'll hear in traffic testimony in more detail later, but we feel that these resident, or retail spaces don't really warrant a specific designated loading spot. The deliveries would be made by UPS box truck-sized vehicles and could pull up, I'll say, double-park momentarily while they make the delivery and then exit. Trash enclosures. We're proposing four trash enclosure areas at basically the four-corner extremes of the site. There was a comment in one of the review memorandums that we look at the capacity of those trash enclosures. These would all be private waste haulers, so if there is an occasion where it's being picked up once a week and that becomes problematic with capacity of the trash enclosure, the trash private waste hauling is managed by the property owner, so a more frequent pickup could be implemented. And I'll say, when we get to the memos, you'll hear this, but with regards to the trash enclosures and the layout of those, we would certainly welcome the opportunity to review, work with your professional engineer to enhance the location or size or orientation of those to increase capacity in any way that they would feel appropriate. And then there is also a specific requirement in the overlay design standards that, architectural design standards that requires landscaping on all three sides of the trash enclosures. And I'm sure that envisions that the fourth side would be the side where you'd enter to pick up and, and get, this, pick up the garbage. But in this case, we have trash enclosures that are also located immediately adjacent to parking spots, and there's also walkways leading to the trash enclosures. So what we would suggest is relief be granted for that landscaping on all three sides to the degree where if, beyond just the required access point for the trash enclosure, if it's immediately adjacent to a track space or other landscape like a sidewalk, that the landscaping wouldn't be required there, but certainly any other spot that would be With regards to site constraints and environmental, I'll flip right back quickly to the first page. With the exception of a small, isolated wetland, which is just behind the parking area that exists on Lot Five, there's only off-site wetland area and flood plain and stream quarter with this tributary to the Royce Brook that just encroaches slightly onto the southwest corner of Lot 11, our most southerly lot. That area there is not going to be touched at all. We don't plan to do anything in that area, and we would place it in a conservation easement. And that small, isolated wetland, we are proposing to fill and have already submitted an application to DEP for GP6 to fill that isolated wetland. With the exception of those two minor critical areas, there's no other critical areas on the site, so the impacts, the critical areas for this project are minimal. Stormwater management. I'll have that exhibit later, but one might look at this immediately and come to the conclusion that there's no stormwater management proposed. What we proposed in this case is underground detention facilities that will be under the parking area to the rear of the three buildings fronting Route 206, and then under the parking area on either side of the recreational facility. Primarily, the site drains toward Route 206. The drainage review will be reviewed by not only DOT, your engineer, but we've actually also, with any application, made application to the DNR Canal Commission, and we've actually already received their review memorandum that summarizes their review of our stormwater management proposal and indicates that we complied with all the state standards. That's the NJAC7, semicolon, 8, with regards to all the aspects of stormwater management, including water quality.
Mr. Ford, has the Board been provided, or the Board's professionals been provided with the DRCC memo?
I believe when DRCC issues a memo, they automatically send it to the town. Do you have it? It's a DRCC memo dated January 17, 2019. And we still have work to do with the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission, but it's simply administrative prior to issuing any final review or approval, I'm sorry, final approval Prior to issuing any final review or approval, I'm sorry, final approval, they require proof of both county and township approval.
It has been received. Thank you.
Thank you. Perhaps I can go to Page 3. Page 3 is an overall vicinity map with regards to, or this is something that came out of our discussions with your staff through the review comments, the benefit of an illustration that shows beyond just our track boundaries how both vehicular and pedestrian traffic would be implemented. As I described earlier, and I'm highlighting now Amal Road, we have access through the ability to traverse the Amal Road site to make both left and right turns out of Amal Road and head east and westbound on Amal Road. And obviously, that takes you back to the traffic light at Amal Road and Route 206, a considerable distance from the traffic light, giving vehicles plenty of time to merge to the left if they were to want to continue northbound on Route 206. And then, also, that gives an opportunity in the opposite direction to enter the Amal Road site, traverse through the Amal Road site and into this site. There's also that connection that I described early to the park-and-ride where today, both users of the Amal Road site can exit and then, again, make that right out onto Amal Road. And then, there's that complete connection to the Bottle King site through the park-and-ride site. There was also a suggestion as part of our earlier discussions with the township staff to provide for the ability to connect to our neighbors to the south. That is, that professional office building that received planning board approval. And on our plans, we already show conceptually, and we've developed a detail for a driveway connection where I'm highlighting now, which is the southwest corner of our site at the rear of that parking lot. And we've shown how the trash enclosure at that location can be relocated to allow for that connection. It would reduce our parking by about three parking spaces, but we'd still be in compliance with the total number of parking spaces required onsite. And while this site plan for this office building doesn't really, as part of the approved plans, show any potential connection for this driveway, there's a stormwater management basin on that site where I'm highlighting along their driveway. Then, there's parking along that entire northerly property line of that off-site professional building. And then, in order to provide for this connection, we would impact three of those parking spaces. But as part of our detailed design, we've shown how those three parking spaces on that site could be reoriented on the westerly end of that parking area. So, the professional building to the south, as a result of a driveway connection, would not lose any parking spaces. And that would be subject, of course, to the owners' approval of that site, and we have made contact with the owner's engineer. And as part of that communication with the owner's engineer, what was relayed to our office was that the owner is not, at this juncture, willing to allow for the connection. And we can provide what correspondence we've had already, and we can continue to pursue that connection with that neighbor. We fully intend to cooperate and have already prepared a design that allows for the full implementation of that connection should the board choose to have that connection made and the owner cooperate. Okay, now, I'll go, let's say, to the next exhibit. Exhibit 4. This is pedestrian access. May be a little difficult to see from a distance. What I've tried to enter or exhibit on this illustration is the existing sidewalks highlighted in a color beige or yellow, or a beige color, the existing crosswalks in red. And then, what's been suggested is we provide some additional crosswalks, and we would do that. That is, right now, we have an existing crosswalk along the rear, if you will, of these three buildings fronting Route 206 across the main driveway, but it was suggested that we provide some designated crosswalks between those three buildings headed toward the rear of the site and provide a nice pedestrian-friendly connection between the residence and the commercial in the front. And we've proposed three of those locations here at intersections. And to the rear of the site, there's a long driveway, if you will, headed north-south, and there was a suggestion that for these residents in these rear buildings, provide some designated crosswalks to provide for pedestrian designated crossings to allow for those residents to access and get to not only the commercial along Route 206, but the onsite recreational facility. And then, with regards to off-site, what I'm highlighting now is the parking spaces that would be proposed along that access aisle from the subject site to the Amal Road or Amal Mall site. And what we were proposing there is a crosswalk and pedestrian access with a concrete sidewalk all the way. There is existing concrete sidewalk along the northerly end of the Amal Mall, and we would propose what's not there now, a designated crosswalk and concrete sidewalk connecting this entire pedestrian linkage to the park-and-ride site. And that, of course, would require township approval since the property is owned by the township. That would be a township committee suggestion, decision. Thank you. Okay. Am I going too fast or too far?
Nope.
Is there any direction you'd rather me go? Keep going. Keep going. All right. Pedestrian access. I'm going to Page 5 in the exhibits. In the architectural design standards, there's a requirement that pedestrian sidewalks be pigmented and some designated crosswalks. What we would propose in this situation is something similar to what you see here. This is an illustration showing standard concrete sidewalks. That is not colorized, but at crosswalks, we would stamp the pavement and colorize the pavement. We felt this would add a nice look and also help to identify those pedestrian crossings in a more village-yet-safe manner. And let me go to Page 6. Page 6 is an illustration, and I'll get to now trees. As part of the application, we are proposing, or will be impacting 258 trees. Right now, the plans as submitted, and that impact of the 258 trees calculates with your tree mitigation ordinance, a mitigation requirement of 782 trees, planting 782 trees. We had, as part of the initial application, and even at our appearance before, the Environmental Commission suggested that the application would pursue an economic hardship waiver. I'll tell the board this evening we're not doing that. We would endeavor to plant or provide for and compensate and mitigate for the 782 trees. The first step toward that would be enhancing our onsite proposed tree plantings. So, what you see now is an illustration that's different from Page 2, where we're showing 153 trees. In this illustration, we've shown and added 500 and, or a total of 566 trees. So, we're not quite to the 782, but you can see where we've filled in with a number of trees between the buildings and then both along our northerly and southerly boundaries, provided for some columnar-growing evergreen trees and along the boulevard, enhanced plantings, as well as even in this area of the proposed conservation easement, some supplemental plantings, if that's appropriate. And this would all be done, these additional or proposed total 566 trees, in accordance and in, subject to review and approval by your town professionals. I'm sure you can see with doing the math, we're still short 216 trees. What we would propose is that the applicant who owns this property, owns the Amal Mall property, also owns the Hillsborough Business Center property, that is, the industrial complex at the end accessed off of Raider Boulevard, to provide for additional plantings in that area, including the median island down the middle of Raider Boulevard today that has sparse plantings. And that would include in front of Hillsborough Cinema out to Route 206. So, what we would propose is that the 200, what can be planted on this site of the 782 total would be planted at this other location, subject to review and approval by your professionals. And then, should there be a shortfall, not be an ability or an appropriate spot as determined by your professionals to locate those 216 remaining trees at this other location, there would be a cash contribution. So, at the end of the day, the plans, the trees would be planted on this site at another location owned by the applicant in sight or a cash contribution. And then, alternatively to the cash contribution, what we would suggest is, and this is in your ordinance, we would provide the trees to the parks department and plant them at locations where they designate to plant the trees. So, I've suggested some alternatives, but the end result would be no economic hardship waiver request and 782 trees. What I also show in this illustration at the bottom of the page is the future of Route 206. That is, once the DOT does not have jurisdiction over it and the town implements the town center cross-section, that would include a landscape median island down the middle of Route 206, through lanes both north and southbound. On either side of those through lanes would be a bike lane. And then, at the immediate curb lines on both east and west side of Route 206 would be parallel parking. Our project has been laid out to accommodate that future cross-section of Route 206 when it is implemented. So, there would be no need to do anything to these buildings. These buildings would not obstruct that future vision of Route 206. And in fact, on this illustration, we've shown how the Route 206 cross-section can be implemented not only on our side of Route 206, that is, the west side, but across the frontage of the Bottle King site. And that shows the parallel parking along the existing curb line. Then, finally, Exhibit 7. What I've highlighted here is the underground stormwater management basin. Before we discuss how, and I'd like to flip back to this first exhibit and just go quickly back to 6 so you could see the difference in the landscaping, going from 153 trees to the 566, if you will. You can see the drastic difference with the infill of trees. Let me summarize some other design waivers. There was, at the introduction of the application, a reference to the spacing and pole-mounted lights. What we've shown is lighting that's 15 feet high rather than 12 feet high. With a three-story building, the 12-foot-high pole really might look out of place in scale, but we've shown adequate lighting in accordance with the town ordinance with those 15-foot-high poles and spacing in some locations that exceeds the 80-foot spacing. It's not in every spot, and we would request that relief. I spoke earlier regarding the pending DOT application, the DEP application, and the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission. We've also already secured approval from the Somerset-Raritan Valley Sewer Conservation District dated February 14, 2019, and we have pending applications with the county, the Hillsborough Township Municipal Utilities Authority. And then, certainly, we would then make a step to the Somerset-Raritan Valley Sewer Authority for sewer extension approval and finally, DEP for the Treatment Works approval. Perhaps at this time, I'd like to just go to the memorandums. I don't think it'll be that lengthy because I'll tell the board that we've received a number of review memorandums. That is, a fire review dated March 4, 2019. We would agree to comply with each and every comment in that review memorandum to their satisfaction. We also received Environmental Commission memorandum dated March 19, 2019. We met with the Environmental Commission on February 25, 2019. I attended a site walk with a commission member on March 9, 2019. And in the review memorandum from the Environmental Commission, we'd agree as any condition of approval to address any of their comments to their satisfaction. And I think it really came down to a request that during construction, the trees to be preserved, and there are trees to be preserved along the track boundaries and in that conservation area, that they be protected with a snow fence, and we would agree to do that. And then, there also was some discussion at the Environmental Commission about the tree mitigation requirements. And I'll say, there, I'll say, distaste for a request for an economic hardship waiver. And as I've already said, we would fully comply with the 782 trees required under the tree mitigation requirements. Then, with regards to...
Excuse me, Mr. Ford?
Yes, sir.
On the last thing regarding the bat and all that, was that something that needs to be addressed as far as your environmental consultant?
That, I can speak to that. We've made application to DEP. We fully expected the DEP permit when issued will require or have conditions associated with it, and we anticipate that one of those conditions will be a limitation on disruption or disturbance of trees onsite during certain periods of the year. That is, April till the end of September, and we would comply with that requirement.
Comply with that. Okay.
And that's associated with the northern long-eared bat.
That's correct.
I just wanted, David, did we get the Environmental Commission report?
Yes, that's what we're...
With regards, then, there's only two more memorandums that I'd like to speak to. That is, a March 15, 2019 memorandum from Mr. Maskey, your planning director, and a March 28, 2019 memorandum from T&amp;M Associates. First, with regards to the planning memorandum, I think... I think highlighted and touched on many of the relief requirements, with the exception of the ones associated with the architectural design itself, and that'll be addressed by the architect. There was also a suggestion in Mr. Maskey's memorandum that I haven't spoken to yet, and that is with regards to pedestrian access. And we met with Mr. Maskey to discuss this. What was suggested is that the applicant consider an off-site improvement, that is, extending the sidewalk from the signalized intersection at Route 206 and Bottle King, if you will, in a northerly direction across the frontage of Bottle King and then up into the Bottle King site, so that pedestrians from this site would have a pedestrian access route along Route 206.
Could you turn to Page 3, you'll be able to see-
Oh, yeah, sure, sure. Page 3?
Yeah.
That one? Is that it?
No, Page 3.
Oh, there we go. Okay, here we go. Yeah, better, better, yeah. Okay. It would be a sidewalk across the frontage of Bottle King and then up into the Bottle King site. The applicant's willing to pursue that with that property owner? It would be subject to his permission to allow us to make that improvement, but the applicant would be willing to do that? Is there anything else?
Bust up.
Yes. There was a suggestion that we contact the Hillsborough Township Public Schools to discuss schoolchildren' bus access. First, the site has been designed to provide for full access through it for emergency vehicles, and that would be fire truck and a bus. I met with Lisa Bennett, the transportation supervisor of the public schools, yesterday, and we discussed schoolchildren transportation. What I understand would be their desire would be, first, any high schoolers at this location could walk to the high school, just as the student drivers walk to the high school from the existing park-and-ride site. And then the schools would utilize perhaps this bus stop that exists right now for any other busing needs. So that was their suggestion. I issued a letter yesterday to Mrs. Bennett outlining the discussion and our understanding, and I'm awaiting a response confirming that.
Mr. Ford, you're saying they prefer then the school bus for the elementary kids in the park-and-ride lot as opposed to coming in-site?
That was, that was the discussion. And I would say as an alternative, this site could accommodate, perhaps, and this might be a logical location for, would be a school pickup right in front of our community building. There is sidewalk and areas to stand there, and perhaps even on inclement weather days, there could be access made available to the recreational facility for students. So that would be another option, that of course, we'd accommodate whatever the Board of Ed desires.
Well, or what we desire.
Or what this board recommends.
I, I, I mean, I'm gonna, I'm not sure I'm gonna speak for everybody, but I think on-site is the preferred option.
And we can do that. We can certainly do that.
Just to refresh the board's memory on the Meadowbrook project on Amwell Road, we got a similar situation where the Board of Ed said they would pick the kids up on Amwell Road. The board said no. And eventually, they worked out an arrangement where the buses will go into the development and pick up the kids on-site.
Yeah, but the problem here is that the buses then have to go all the way through the parking lot of Amwell Mall out to Amwell, and because there's no access back out to go, to go north on 206.
Well, they may have to get creative to get around. Yes. I mean, I, I think we-
The traffic flow's the problem, not the bus stop.
I think that's gonna be an area for discussion later is this back door out to Amwell Road.
There was one other comment in the Environmental Commission regarding a request for conservation easement being placed around the critical areas, that is, the stream quarter at the rear left or southwest corner of our site, and we would agree to comply with that and add to the plans, the posting of any signs in compliance with the town's requirements regarding notification of people that there's a conservation easement present. Is there anything else, Mr. Ford?
Oh, yes.
Okay. You want me to go to engineering or come back?
No, that's all right.
Okay.
But stick with my memo if you don't mind.
Sure.
5.3 cross-access to adjoining properties. This is a general note. You'll be at some point presenting us with a sign package to show direction, mainly wayfinding signage, because you are taking people through the Amwell Mall to get to Amwell, so you'll have some signs to Route 206 north, et cetera.
Correct.
Okay, and that'll be to the satisfaction of the board engineer?
Yes.
Okay. There is a-
So I just wanted, I, I think that's an area for discussion.
Does the trash collection station for the Amwell Mall, right where you're crossing through? I had to comment, right now, it's, first of all, it's not enclosed, it doesn't meet standards, but now it's in sort of a back corner, so it's not, it doesn't interfere with the traffic, but with your cross-access, I could see it getting in the way. If you have a garbage truck or something there, you're gonna block access. So can that trash collection area be relocated on the Amwell Mall site?
Right now, we would suggest that it stay where it's at, and we can work with the board engineer to look at other locations for that. And we understand, yes, the, the current condition of that is not in compliance with the enclosure specifics.
Well, it's not only that, but when I was there, the one they, there's several dumpsters, and they were just sort of scattered about. If you have traffic coming through from, from this site, you're gonna have dumpsters blocking the aisle. And if you have a garbage truck there, he's gonna be blocking traffic. So it's really, it really needs to be relocated.
Yeah, we have an alternative location that we can discuss with the board engineer. I'll say centrally located, more toward the rear of the site and away from that driveway.
All right. But again, I think we want to talk about this, this cross-access, later.
Okay.
Refuge collection, you pretty much covered. Signs, you'll be preparing a sign package at a later date, correct?
Correct.
Stream card, do you address lighting? Will the architect be talking about the green technology requirements?
Yes.
All streets and utilities will be privately owned, correct?
Correct.
All HVAC systems, et cetera, will be screened. And your architect will go through the ASDO standards, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Lastly-
I'm sorry, is there any provision for recycling?
That would be part of the trash enclosure area, yes. If it's, if recycling is still a profitable business.
Aluminum, maybe.
But no, there would be provisions for that, and that would be private waste hauler as well.
Okay, so in the memo from the county, that they asked if they were gonna do the recycling to account for that, so you-
Right, no, we wouldn't-
Private recycling?
We wouldn't be burdening the county with that. We would take care of ourselves.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. With regards to the, this is, I think, the last review that I referenced, the March 28, 2019 review memorandum by T&amp;M Associates. We would agree to address each and every comment that requires a plan revision to their satisfaction as part of any condition of approval. With regards to traffic, we have a traffic engineer that'll speak to that in a minute. So that section, I'm gonna leave and defer to him.
That's fine.
And with regards to the environmental, we have the environmental consultant here, but we've already spoken to the minimal impacts of the environmental aspects for this project and the fact that we've made application to DEP for the minor little area of wetlands that would be disturbed. And certainly, if there's anything else you'd like me to address at this time with regards to the site civil engineering plans, I'd be glad to do that.
I just have a couple of general questions based on your testimony. Couple things I just wanna get clarified on the record. One, with the increase in landscaping, obviously, we haven't had a chance to review it. That'll come to us for additional review. You're indicating that you're gonna be increasing the plantings on the property, approximately 413 additional plantings?
Right.
Okay. Just wanted the board to know that number, so it's going from 128 to 500, so it's gonna put 400 more trees. If you go to that exhibit where you showed that additional plantings, Exhibit 4, I believe it is?
This is it.
You said you're going to do some evergreens in between some of the residential units?
Well, no, these are, these are deciduous plantings. And then, and then we, right, that would be like shade trees. And then we, what we thought, and this was our landscape architect that paired this exhibit, what we thought is along the northerly-southerly boundary would be a columnar growing evergreen tree. Tall, tall, thinner. That, that's where the evergreens would go.
I was concerned if you were gonna do evergreens in between the buildings, which would then block the views and you'd get confined in. All right, so that's my comments on the landscaping, a little bit on some of the utilities on the property. Right now, you're indicating a single point of connection for your water to Route 206. And you have an isolated loop, has there been any discussions with New Jersey American to provide a second connection to Route 206 so that you have a continuous loop through the property in case there's ever a break?
Right. Yeah, actually, early on in the design process, we contacted New Jersey American Water, actually located right on Raider Boulevard here in Hillsborough. They provided us with a sketch of the location. I'd be glad to provide that sketch to your office for your records, and we've laid out the water the way they've requested us to do it. I think the one point of connection for the system, in their eyes, is that's the control. Beyond that would be private, and laid out by the point of connection would be a valve box and a hot box to prevent any, say, backflow, if you will, to their system. So there, there, I understand what you're saying, and if, certainly if, you know, the fire official, and we've had, we've got the review memorandum from fire official, there's some other issue, we'd be glad to, to work that out to your satisfaction and bring you to New Jersey American and work with them.
I'm okay with the design, as long as New Jersey Americans are okay with it and the fire official.
Yeah.
So that's, that's okay. With the underground detention, and as I was just going through the plan, I noticed a couple areas, light poles and landscaping that are within that shaded area, potential conflicts with your underground storage blocks.
Right.
So that, that's a concern that I did not get to my memo, but I picked it up as you were testing.
No, and it's-
I'm sorry.
No, it's a, it's a good point, and as part of our addressing all the items in your review memorandum, we can also provide you with information from the manufacturer of that underground basin, where utility crossings are appropriate and adequate spacing is provided, and where trees can, cannot be placed. The underground basin can actually be designed such that sections of the modules can be left out so that a utility pole, or I'm sorry, a light post, if you will, or a tree can be implemented. So we're trying to provide a nice balance, and we understand your concern and can address it.
And obviously, if there are eliminations of certain sections-
You make up for the storage somewhere else.
Correct.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
One other question, and this may also tie into some of the traffic testimony. Do you know of any potential commercial users? And I'm going towards the delivery aspect, where you testified that would be box trucks, UPS, FedEx would be anticipated for deliveries, since you do not have any loading zones on the property. Any idea of what those potential tenants are going to be?
No, I don't. I can only speak to, in discussions with the applicant and developing this application and project over the last more than a year, is the 28,000-square-foot retail element is not a desire of the applicant. There's a, I'll say, an anticipation that that may be actually difficult to lease, given current marketing conditions. But that was a requirement of the ordinance that that pre-provided. So it's a small space, and our expectation would be that it would be small users, perhaps cut up into smaller spaces and wouldn't be large. You know, certainly not gonna be a CVS or something like that.
Well, one of my, one of my concerns, and I've just seen this throughout the state, even if it's a small convenience store, somebody's gonna get deliveries from Coca-Cola or something like that, sometimes those deliveries do come in a small 350 truck. And while he's unloading, he will be taken double parked along five, six, seven parking spaces. That would be my only concern with that type of delivery, understanding that FedEx, UPS, they can use a parking space and/or they're only in and out in five seconds. So further testimony from your traffic engineer?
Right, perhaps a traffic engineer. I would think maybe in a situation like this where we have mixed use, we may actually have the benefit of the residential parking spaces really being unoccupied during the day when deliveries could be made, since substantial portion of the, the community is, is residential. So, but perhaps the traffic engineer can provide additional testimony in that regard.
And then just one more question, if I may. Parking for the residential units, is garage or is everything in a driveway?
There's garages, driveways behind the garages, and then there also is standard parking spaces.
What is the distance between the face of building or garage door and then the sidewalk?
18 feet minimum. And that's in accordance with RSI's standard to qualify as a parking space. Yeah.
Just a concern that people who do park in those spaces, you may have overhang of that sidewalk. So some of your pedestrian access routes may be impeded by, by vehicles or people who do not park right up to that garage door. And understanding it's a tight site, I don't know what the answer is, just putting it out there for the board.
What was the, what was the length of the-
It's 18 feet. That's, that's our residential site improvement standard requirement.
So from the garage door, the beginning of the sidewalk is 18 feet, or from the garage door to the road is 18 feet, including the-
To the back of the sidewalk. So the, the building, even the garage door is often set in, so it would be 18 feet from the building to the first line of sidewalk, a four-foot sidewalk, a smile, a small planter strip, then, you know, and driveway apron, and then the driveway. So, yeah, there's, it's about 20, 24 feet in total.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. That was it for the memorandums and-
Comments? Anyone have, you wanna start?
Well, I'm just gonna ask, do you wanna talk about the traffic flow, or you wanna wait for the traffic engineer?
I'll let the traffic engineer.
And I guess he'll talk about the loading zones, your lack of? Okay.
We open the public.
Do I have a motion to open the public?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
All right.
There's anyone from the public that would like to ask this witness questions, of his testimony or anything he can answer, but just remember, there is a traffic engineer, so.
I already crossed the bus.
Okay, good.
Okay. There was a lot of information you gave, I'm not sure if I missed a few things. On the three mixed-use buildings on Route 206, the entrances to the second and third-floor apartments, are there elevators and are there dedicated spots for the residents who will be above the stores?
I can answer, no elevators, and I would defer to the architect for the rest of, that's all building-related.
Okay. The retail, you said, has a front in the, has fronts?
Excuse me?
Has entrances in the front and the back, the retail?
Yes.
Okay. Is that gonna be one store going through, or are you gonna have separate stores in the front and back, or don't know yet?
Yeah, I think that, no, we do know, and I- Yeah, I think that, no, we do know, and I think I defer all, these are all building-related, yeah.
Okay, we'll get to them later. The affordable housing, are any of those going to be disabled or ADA compliant?
Actually, technically, that's another architectural question, but it's my understanding that there actually is a code requirement that either there are a certain percentage that are ADA compliant or easily convertible to ADA compliant, but-
Okay, that's, okay.
I'm whiffing so far.
If they're built ADA compliant, do we still get extra, like an extra half a credit or something per unit? No? Okay. The school bus access, the apartments, this came up, I think Mr. Hyville was here, with the new apartments that are on Amwell Road over near Pleasant View, and there was a problem with them not wanting the school buses to go in there into the apartments. Now I'm noticing, I don't know what happens in the morning, but I'm on Amwell, multiple school buses stopping for drop-off in the afternoon on Amwell Road. Is there any chance you could end up with that on 206?
I think that's what the board's already made clear, their concerns about location.
Okay. Yeah, because that's, that's tough in the afternoon with those four lanes of traffic going by at 2:30.
Right. And I'd be interested, just as a side note, Mr. Maskey, if you could look into these drop-offs on Amwell Road, if this is really happening, because I don't recall any approvals.
On which development?
Um, the new development, the affordable housing, I don't know what it's called at this point.
The RPM.
Of the RPM development.
Yeah, I think-
The apartments.
I understand that while the project under construction in back is, is being worked on that-
The K-HO, yeah.
Right, doesn't, doesn't, you know, make it safe for the access for buses.
Okay, because it's, it's, it's not good in the afternoon, and a lot of those kids are pretty young. I know a lot of them have parents that meet them at the bus stop, I can see them there, and I can understand why they do it. The Bottle King, is there any, I don't know if I missed something, and these get smaller as the years pass, is there any cross-access to the back of Bottle King so that the residents could use the traffic light that's already there, right on the corner?
Uh, for vehicular, no. The applicant, you know, some time ago pursued the Bottle King site owner for cooperation in developing this site, and they were not willing to cooperate or participate at all, and that actually what, is what led to the pursuit of the access through the Amwell Mall site to provide for some type of alternative access.
Also, on the buffer between your apartments and the back of Bottle King, Bottle King already has something there, don't they, a fence or some evergreens or something along that side?
Yes.
Okay, are you proposing to add more buffering on your side, because that's not a pretty view for your renters?
Right, no, we do plan, and that was one of the items we discussed earlier, was providing additional landscaping there.
Okay, now, on to the 21st century. Are there going to be any electric car charging stations built in anywhere? Or will they be available?
There's none proposed on the site at this time, perhaps when the architect speaks to the green energy, we can address that.
Okay, so that's when we would discuss.
Right now, we're not proposing that.
Okay, and that would also be a question of whether solar panels are going to be there, that would be the green.
Right.
Okay.
No, no solar panels are proposed now.
Okay, that's it for now, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anyone else from the public that would like? Okay, you think, you want to?
So, Mike, as it relates to the, the parking area to the, to the south, and then the other existing dwelling that's there now.
The connection?
The connection, yeah. So I know that that is where there's a significant amount of water that accumulates whenever there's a significant storm, because that is a, there is a bit of a valley on 206 right at, at the front of that dwelling. I'm wondering if there's been any, any discussion or plan to figure out a way to, to address that, which might help the concerns of that, of that dwelling and allow for that access. I know part of the issue is the, I think that culvert's just not big enough to handle the, the flow that's coming to, through it.
The 206?
Yeah, I'm right on 206.
Yeah. With regards to stormwater, today, our site drains primarily toward Route 206, but there's also sheet flow that drains toward that business to the south of us. By putting in the parking here with the controlled, you know, the curb to cut off any drainage, literally from our site, overland onto those sites will be virtually zero. There's, it's, there's, so we're cutting it off, and then we collect our stormwater and translate it, you know, it discharges into our underground basins where the quantity is controlled at a, and released at a reduced rate and connecting directly into the drainage in Route 206. And there's actually two drainage connection points, one on the north end that connects the drainage that crosses Route 206 and goes, continues through the Stop and Shop site, so not the entire site even will end up all south on our side of Route 206, or the west side of 206. It's really only our southern portion, at the end of the day, will connect into the drainage that exists, the systems that exist in Route 206. And then those stormwater management facilities aren't just meeting pre-developed peak flows. We have to reduce the peak flow for the two-year storm to 50% of what it is today from our site, and then the 10-year storm to 75% of what it is today from our site, and then the peak flow for the 100-year storm from our site is reduced to 80% of what it is today. And that's from the existing condition with all those trees, so you're, you're taking into consideration a substantially low flow today, and even reducing it further by over-detaining onsite. So I think our stormwater will go a long way toward helping to alleviate existing onsite or existing offsite condition, conditions and issues. Certainly, the drainage feature that you're talking about that goes down and under Route 206 here, and I think there's that pedestrian bridge that goes over it.
Yep.
Uh, that's a significant drainage area, you know, upstream, you know, hundreds of acres, so our portion of it is probably minimal, so I wouldn't say that there's going to be some appreciable, noticeable, certainly would be better.
Yeah, I, no, I agree with that. I'm not talking about necessarily to get all the way to the stream, but essentially just south of the property is where it starts to, it starts to valley a little bit and then comes back up as you approach the Walgreens Center, right?
Okay.
So you get that, that valley there where all the water starts to flow, which is why you've got that, that, that's, that's more my concern, is it, is it driving it to that area and creating a problem on either for, just off of 206 or to any of the surrounding properties?
Okay. Yeah, no, I think that our design, we've already met the standard with the, you know, our canal commission, we've got comments to address to your engineer's satisfaction, perhaps as part of that, addressing those comments, anything we can do to further enhance or reduce the flow in that particular direction, we can, we can do. And address it to his satisfaction.
Thanks. Mr. Ford? In the picture of what your updated tree planting on, which is diagram six, what you show there?
Yes.
Obviously, you have the proposed island in the center with those trees.
Right.
Would the applicant be willing to, at the time of present, use some of those tree mitigation funds to design and build that island and provide the trees there?
Oh, in Route 206. Unfortunately, because it's under the jurisdiction of Route 206, or the DOT, they would not allow it at this point. If the town took it over, that could happen.
Well, that's what's possible for the future, if that becomes.
Right.
Quite honestly, I don't think the town wants to take over.
No.
You're going to pave that?
No, no, just the island there.
No, no, I'm talking about maintaining that part. All of 206, that whole stretch. I know the township can afford that, but that's for you guys to decide later.
Okay.
Yeah, at this point, we can't.
Okay.
Any additional questions? We'll give Mr. Ford a break.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. My next witness is Jay Troutman, he's our-
Call.
You want five? Need a break? Okay, we're going to take five minutes, we've got to give everyone just kind of a quick breather and-
My next witness is Jay Troutman, he's our traffic engineer, so I'd ask if he's sworn in.
Yes, I do. Jay Troutman, T-R-O-U-T-M-A-N, principal with the traffic engineering firm of McDonough and Ray Associates, 105 Elm Street, Westfield, New Jersey. I've been practicing in the field for 32 years, conducting traffic studies for various types of sites, as well as reviewing traffic studies on behalf of the planning and zoning boards that I represent. I'm a licensed professional engineer specializing in traffic engineering, and I've been accepted at over 100 planning and zoning boards in the state of New Jersey, including Hillsborough Township.
Thank you. If anyone doesn't have any objections, we'll accept your credentials. May proceed, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, our office completed and submitted a fully detailed traffic impact study dated September 24th, 2018. It's been reviewed by your township professionals. Comments were received from your township engineering consultant relative to traffic, and we can provide testimony to address those comments where testimony was requested. Our study included site visits and field investigations, roadway and site peak hour traffic counts, site traffic estimates and distribution of site traffic, future no-build-and-build traffic projections, intersection level of service, capacity calculations, and NJDOT pre-application meeting and application filing. As Mr. Ford testified, this project is under the jurisdiction of NJDOT for the access to Route 206. I can tell you that that package has been submitted to NJDOT following our pre-application meeting, and that I expect that an access permit will be granted, since this site qualifies for a driveway under the requirements of the NJDOT access code. The driveway design that's in the plans before you this evening, I anticipate approval of that design as it's been discussed ahead of time with NJDOT. The traffic study shows that the proposed access and circulation pattern that is shown in the plans will provide adequate roadway capacity for the site-generated traffic to enter and exit the site, and that adequate levels of service can be maintained at the adjacent intersections. Looking at, looking at the comments from T and M Associates, there were comments in, under paragraph C, the traffic and circulation comments. Comment number two regarding a Saturday peak hour study period, this site is predominantly residential. The focus of the study was on the journey to work and work-to-home trips that take place on weekdays. The retail portion is relatively small and kind of ancillary to the residential. It's not expected to be a dominant generator on Saturday, the more critical conditions occur on the weekday hours that we had studied. So in this case, you would analyze the weekday peaks, the Saturday traffic kind of has a different feel, less urgency, you know, because it's Saturday. If this was a grocery store or some kind of big box like Costco that everybody comes to on Saturday, obviously you'd need to focus on that, that would be having a significant impact. Comment number three talks about one of our data points was from a traffic count in 2014. It wasn't clear in the report, but the traffic data was all verified to the 2018 conditions. It was by comparing the volumes between the intersections to make sure the data matched and that the, and the 2014 data was adjusted upward where necessary, although it was, it was a fairly good match to begin with. The, the growth in volume in this length of 206 has been relatively flat over the last five years, which leads me to comment four about the, about the growth factor. We use the NJDOT growth factor, their, their factors also show relatively flat traffic growth of 1.1%, so we assume that in our analysis. I think that adequately covers the, the pattern we've seen the last five years. The, the other, the unique thing about this project is the, the timing for full occupancy of this site is going to coincide with the completion of the Route 206 bypass, at which time we would expect the, the volumes along this section of 206 to decrease as the, as the through traffic is routed around on the bypass. We don't anticipate any type of measurable impact on the, on the driveway that goes out to Amwell Road, that's a secondary access, and we think overall the area is just going to get better with the, with the volume reduction from the bypass. As Mr. Ford testified, I think along the state highway, we're closing eight driveways down to one, that's something that DOT likes, getting rid of all those access points. The mixed-use concept of the plan tends to keep the cars off the road, because you have a walkable environment you're creating here. This is, I think we're starting to see some of the, what I would call, some of the planning efforts of this town come to life in this site. I've been coming here doing studies for many, many years and talking about this whole general area and the need to look at it as a town center, and I think this is an important piece of that, and has the elements of a town center in by all the pedestrian connections and the, and the mixed uses and actually having people right here as well where all the facilities are. And, you know, with, with the, with the bypass on the way, you can finally see some of these things come into life. I know that, I know there was, I guess, some discussion during Mike's testimony about, about the cross easement you wanted to discuss under traffic?
Well, I don't know about the cross easement, but certainly, you know, it would be helpful, but, you know, I know that we, we talk about the 206, and I don't think anyone's worried about the on-or-off traffic volumes onto 206. I think the, the concern, at least for me, is driving traffic that has to head north on 206, through the development, through a parking lot, a retail parking lot, and then trying to then get back onto Amwell Road. And maybe I missed it, but I'm not sure, I saw what impact that would have in the, in the study, and more than the Amwell Road traffic, I'm concerned about the flow and the safety concerns about how we're going to create a drive-through lane essentially through the, through this nice development that's, we're trying to create a down, you know, a town center environment. You have all kinds of pedestrian crosswalks, and we're driving traffic completely through the development, out to a retail shopping center, and then out to Amwell Road. Is that optimal?
Uh, I guess, in my study, in looking at the numbers, the 206 access has three of the four movements are there, that's kind of the main deal is, is the use of 206, and certainly that's a majority. This, in my opinion, having done many sites on 206, the big concern is always how are you going to get a left turn out on the Route 206? It's been that way for years. If you're a mid-block property on 206, what are you going to do about a left turn? So what I liked about this was, was all the options that are available for people who, you don't have to have to make a left on 206. It, the, the pattern is around the perimeter of that parking lot, it's not anywhere where- It's not anywhere where pedestrians would be crossing to get to the stores or anything. And it also connects in so you can get to the post office traffic signal. You could get to the Bottle King parking lot. You could even get out to the traffic signal at 206 and Hillsborough Center Drive North opposite Bottle King. So there are, depending on what the driver chooses to do, many, many ways to go and not have to make that direct left onto 206. The other option is that somebody could, you could actually go all the way around. If you made a right on 206 South, you could go down to Raider Boulevard and stay completely on the streets and get west or get back to 206 on Amwell Road. So this site's location affords a lot of flexibility, I think, for the traffic movements.
Right. But I think the concern here, and if you know anything with what's going on in this area, as I was mentioning before, it's a park, you know, it's the off-site parking lot for the high school students. So you've got a lot of student activity there in the mornings. I think that's where the biggest concern is at this point. I don't like what I heard earlier about the, you know, now that the school board's thinking of running school buses through there. I mean, you're turning this into a thoroughfare during weekday mornings during the school year. I think, you know, I agree. You know, when we're talking about town center, look, that's almost kind of like a city, you know, block or whatever. You know, three rights make a left. I mean, that's what may have to happen. And anyone that's looking to go north on 206 in the morning is probably looking to shoot straight all up to 287. Well, that's what the Waylon Road was kind of designed. It's sort of a bypass for people that need to commute to the north. You don't commute on, if you live in Hillsborough, you don't commute on 206 in the mornings. You know, you take the bypass around. So it's a short loop around, and, you know, Waylon Road curves quite nicely back. So it really wouldn't be much of a inconvenience for the morning commuters.
Are you suggesting maybe just pedestrian-only access in the back and not vehicular? I'm not sure how to follow that comment.
Well, definitely not keen on vehicular. Not sure pedestrian because it's starting to look like a back alley now. You know, pathway there. So I'm just not sure, you know, because I don't see any other walkways or sidewalks other than that they're on the property itself. So people are going to have to cross through that back alley of the retail center in the back there too, so.
I know in listening to Mr. Ford, you know, he was all about making every pedestrian connection and amenity he could make to make it as walkable and pleasant for pedestrians as possible. I think there's certainly things that could be done along those lines.
Yeah, I mean, if anyone else has an opinion about pedestrian...
Do you want to add to the chairman's concern here? Can we have the picture?
Raj, use the mic.
Raj, you gotta lean in. It doesn't go far.
Yes, could we have the traffic schematics that were shown in slide two? Or any one should work, actually. Let's zero in on this piece right here.
Raj, you gotta lean in. Somebody get your...
I'm sorry, I don't have a laser pointer or anything, but that little shaded area out there, that's the first thing that struck out to me when I looked at the schematics. Let's just hone in on that. Let's just zero in on that. And visualize rush hour, maybe in the morning, right? School buses coming in, people trying to egress. Maybe, you know, a garbage or a compactor truck trying to make its way in. Does it really make for a very pretty picture? That's a question that I've been asking myself.
My experience with these sites is, you know, the garbage pickup is not every day. It comes and it goes usually by itself. It's not in that picture. That's usually a separate activity. I don't know that they have school buses here now. My understanding is the high school kids walk from here. And we discussed that we could talk to the board, Ed, about not having that be the school bus pickup. So we can address that.
Well, I thought a few minutes ago, we were sort of thinking about maybe having a bus stop somewhere near the community center. Let me reserve a bus stop comment, right? Maybe that kind of confuses things a bit more. But let's talk about heavy traffic out in that area with the high school parking right adjacent to it, kids flitting about. I mean, I don't know. It just creates a bit of a, not very pretty picture in my mind.
Yeah. You've got high school kids walking through there. You have a family center for, you know, children with Down Syndrome right in that shopping center. You have a number of areas where people kind of try to get in and out quickly. It just looks like a safety problem to me. I mean, that's, I understand the limitations. I do. But I don't know how that flow works for egress to get out to the north.
It's, flow-wise, it's not an intense flow. I mean, it's residential stuff.
You have 190 units on that. 109, I mean, you know, we're not talking 20.
Right. But I guess the thing you gotta look at is how that flow spreads over hours and over different access points. And when you dilute that down, it's not...
Yeah, but we're really...
It's not a Costco.
No, but we're focused. You know, our focus right now is the morning rush. That's the hazard. And I'm going to use, it's a hazard. It's not ideal.
Mr. Troutman, just real quick, your traffic generation at that driveway off of the rear lot 12.01 with Amwell Road, your peak hour morning volumes look like there's six vehicles entering the site and then 38 queuing up to leave at Amwell. And then in your PM peak hour, you have 51 vehicles leaving the site. I understand it's spread out over your peak at the hour. How many cars do you anticipate sitting at that driveway during that, at least that afternoon peak hour, trying to get out onto Amwell? Time the light? Because I actually left there this evening before coming to the meeting. Though there was only two or three cars, I was too deep on the drive aisle that's parallel to Amwell, coming out, having to make a right to come to the stop sign and then make a left out onto Amwell Road. And that was with no future build of this development. So can you just talk the board through what you actually think? How many cars are going to be queued up there at any one time? And how they're going to mitigate with the traffic signals to the north and south?
Again, most of the traffic is focused on 206. This is about an extra car a minute in there, and that's a lot of time. It's hard to picture. I know we all want to paint a horrible storm picture in our minds, but you've got to think about the time gaps and the level of traffic we're talking about is still relatively low in the scheme of traffic engineering. But I hear your concerns. I think the applicant hears your concerns, and I'm not...
Mr. Troutman, have you also, in your study, considered the people that are in that shopping center using that parking lot as an egress to get to 206 and go south as opposed to going out and all the way around the light?
That would certainly be an option if the properties were connected.
Is that in your study? That's, all the people that are coming into that development to get bagels and wherever else in the morning now, they're going to be kind of cruising through and taking the shortcut out?
Well, it depends on which direction they're going, but certainly, that would be something that could take place. Again, it's not, in my mind, a significant generator and something that couldn't be handled by the roads that are designed.
So I guess the answer is you didn't figure that out?
No, I looked at it.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
That was my question.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Now, Mr. Troutman, I know Mr. Ford had testified that there were, I guess, preliminary discussions with the owner of the Bottle King property. Would the applicant entertain additional discussions with them? Because it looks like to come out to that traffic light would be a better situation. And I know you may have talked to him in the beginning of the process. I'm not sure if there's been any subsequent discussions as this project has gotten to this point.
I opened my file for this project in 2014, five years ago. And the reason I opened that file was doing extensive studies of that Bottle King exit for that, for this owner and to show that owner that that works. That we wrote down every stack, every cycle, so we could say, we're not going to jam you up. We had extensive data and extensive conversations, and it wasn't just a one-off. And it did not, they would not cooperate.
Yeah. It doesn't surprise me because he's got signs back there that says no cut through. So... Any additional questions, comments? Do we want to talk about the loading zone? I know that was, or lack of.
I think Mr. Ford gave the same testimony I would give on that issue, which is with this type of retail, it is UPS and FedEx or smaller that comes. And they would typically, you know, be in the aisle on a short-term basis during times when residents aren't really active on the site. Right after all the residents clear out would be when they would tend to be here doing their business in the morning. And I think with this small type of retail, just having parking spaces right next to the front door and having those aisles right there next to the doors functions acceptably. It's not a space that needs a tractor-trailer loading.
Would the applicant be okay with some sort of a restriction on deliveries for trucks larger than UPS or FedEx to come after the morning rush, say 9:00, 10:00 o'clock, when you know most of the site is cleared out?
I think that would be acceptable with the client, limiting large truck deliveries to certain hours, early hours or late hours, as to not interfere. Yes, that would be fine with the applicant as a condition.
The parking spaces are adjacent to the mixed-use buildings. Are they designated for the retail operations? Or are they just open to anybody?
It's open parking, shared throughout the site.
So that could be for, so residents could wind up parking there, and anyone visiting the retail may have to park deeper into the...
The peak parking demand of those two uses is very complementary. So the residents might use it in the overnight when the retail doesn't need it and vice versa. They would tend to be out of there when the retail needed it.
And the weekends, though?
Yeah.
Might be problematic.
Yeah, the weekends is where, why we have to meet the ordinance in terms of total parking to make sure there's enough total parking on the site.
And Mr. Troutman, just the whole idea between the mixed use is that this commercial is to complement the apartments and to draw the pedestrians. So that'll help with your traffic throughout the property, correct?
That's exactly right. It keeps the, it lessens the amount of outside cars to come on for the retail. A lot of the retail demand is generated from within the site.
Any additional questions from the dais?
I have a question about parking spaces. Again, not the sizing or anything, but probably put into traffic. And I'm going to ask the question. If it isn't you, then maybe you could defer me to who the right POC would be. The situation I've seen mostly in places like Northern Virginia, which have urbanized pretty rapidly, what happens is in apartment dwellings like this, right? There are some designated spots for occupants. And then we have, you know, visitors coming in. That traffic flows over to the adjacent areas where people don't really know what to do. I've seen long miles, actually, of traffic parkings on the streets, et cetera. Have we thought about these things? Do you done some, you know, left some, you know, what should I say, contingency for that?
Those are situations where they don't have an ordinance like Hillsborough Township that requires the right amount of parking. That's all that is related to. That's called putting too much without any parking. And that's not the case here.
Okay.
You just have to make sure you have the correct supply.
Okay. And we have kept some allowances for that as well.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any questions for our professionals? Okay, we'll invite the public to. If anyone has questions of this witness, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Okay, it looks like you got a reprieve.
I got some homework to do, too.
Okay, thank you.
So if it pleases the board, it's at the board's discretion if they'd like to continue with perhaps architectural planning testimony or adjourn for the evening? We'll leave it up to the chairman and the board members?
We don't have anything else better to do, right? So let's just keep it going, I guess. You know, at least the architect. Because I think there's a few questions.
Yeah.
Rob? My next witness is Rob Larson. He's our architect. I would ask he be sworn in.
I do. Sure, Robert Larson, L-A-R-S-E-N.
Mr. Larson, could you give the benefit of your educational and professional licensure experience for the board?
Sure. I am a licensed architect and planner here in the state of New Jersey. I have a degree from New Jersey Institute of Technology, a bachelor's of architecture. I'm a partner with the firm of Chester Plousis-Lisowski, 95 Madawan Road, Madawan, New Jersey. I have appeared in front of many boards throughout the state and as well as Superior Court as an architect and planner. And I've appeared before this board as an architect as well.
Unless there's any objection, I'd like to offer him as our expert in architecture.
Everyone's good?
Yep.
Okay, we'll accept.
Okay. So in terms of exhibits, I have to say I was not quite as neat as my peer. I did bring an electronic presentation and boards. I did not bring handouts. So I'm not sure how you want to mark them.
We'll mark the boards.
Sure. Okay, so we have here, I'm going to run through each of the exhibits that I have. The first exhibit I have here, I'm not sure the number...
A2. Want you to describe what that is, Mr. Larson?
Okay, so A2 is a color-rendered elevation of what would be seen from Route 206. This is the Route 206 elevation incorporating the three mixed-use structures as have been discussed, as well as the entrance to the development. This is, you know, an overall of the development as seen from Route 206. My next exhibit will be, is titled Building Plans. As I go through my testimony, I'm going to use these to help describe the way the architecture works in terms of building and dwelling layout and the interrelationship to the retail. I do.
Not so much mark them. Why don't we take it one at a time?
Okay, so A3 is what I described as diagrammatic for the building plans. So A4 will be, I have four... So A4 will be, I have four images on what will be marked as Board A4. For the purpose of viewing on the screen, it has the front elevation, driveway elevation, side elevation of the rear product, the garaged product, as well as the elevation of the rec center, which is further on in my electronic presentation. I guess we're on A4 now?
A5.
A5? A5 has the Route 206 elevation of the 26-unit building, the 19-unit building, mixed-use. A6? I'm sorry, I need to correct the record. So A5 has the front and rear of the 26-unit building. A6 has the front of the 19-unit building and the typical side of the mixed-use building. And A7, which I did bring handouts of, is a proposed signage plan for the development. Okay, so forgive me if I forget the numbers because they do, the images that I have here electronically do comprise a number of different images as mounted on the boards. But I'll start off, again, I've put up here the Route 206 elevation of the project. I think very much, the reason I started with this is, you know, as an architect, as a designer, I think this is a pleasant image considering the town center aspect of this. I think it's establishing that edge on Route 206 and is achieving what was envisioned. As we have mentioned already, I'll go over it again, we are proposing a 191 dwelling units. There are two types of structures. There are 71 dwelling units over 28,000 square feet of retail in the three structures on Route 206. This is actually in compliance with a requirement of the ordinance that 37% of the units in this development be in mixed-use structures. We have the remaining 120 units in what we will describe as the garage product. I do have building plans to go over that, is a duplex over a flat with four out of five units being provided with a garage. To further break down, there are 46 affordable dwelling units. Their mix is governed by the Uniform Housing Affordability Controls. Nine of them are one-bedroom, as required. They range in size from about 635 to 730 square feet. There are 27 two-bedroom affordable units ranging in size from 810 to 870 square feet and 10 three-bedroom affordable housing units, which are ranging in size of about 980 to 1100. And I will go on to the building diagrams. So if I may, we'll start with the mixed-use building on the left. It is an elevator service building. If we look at this lower sort of pinkish-red, you see here that these two areas are retail space flanked on each end by utility rooms and stairway access points for the residences above. The center is the main lobby, I would call it, an area for mail and also a central stair to get you up to that second floor of the building. So these are, these gray areas down here are points of residential access. The red represents the commercial. As has been stated, this portion to the back here, which is the parking side, does have commercial access. And the front, because of the change in grade, we've provided an arcade, a raised arcade, so that a portion of these commercial tenants will also have access to this. Upstairs, you can see there's an elevator right here. There's a central stair coming up. And the color differentiation is just to show there is, there are a variety of dwelling units, one-bedroom, two-bedroom and three-bedroom units on each floor. This typical shown is a 26-unit building. We have two of them and there is also one that has 19 dwelling units in it. If we go to the right of this same exhibit, I'll do the best I can to walk through these, but these are a duplex, a three-story product duplex dwelling unit over a flat. If I start with my green color here, this is a two-bedroom flat. It has an attached garage and it is entered at the end of the building or off of this internal alleyway. I'd like to point out for this product that in terms of realizing that there is a garage side and there is a green side, which we're going to go through in the architecture, you can walk through this building approximately every 50 feet. It is completely finished exterior space. There are no common areas in this structure. Everyone has a door at grade and you're able to then either get to your parking or get out to the green by walking through the building. So if you're leaving, you're able to go to the green or go to the garage side. This yellow flat here is actually an accessible low and moderate dwelling unit. I will note to just go back to the mixed-use structure, because it is elevator serviced, 100% of those dwelling units are accessible dwelling units, meeting all of the tenants of an accessible dwelling unit. In terms of this type, the ground floor, these are accessible dwelling units as provided by or as required by the building code. So this green, these two green and this yellow are all accessible units. And I would also note that this is a typical. If you were to look through the architecture, there is another version, you know, the way that the lower units are mixed. I want to stay on the ground floor for a second and point out that there are occasionally storage rooms that will be available to tenants as additional storage space outside of their unit and accessible from the outside. So if we go to an upper unit, I'm going to start with this corner, middle blue or mid-tone blue unit. It has a garage on the first floor and it has an entrance where this little arrow is here. So you at grade, you open your door and you go upstairs. You're in your home and you walk up one flight. When you get to that second floor, you have an, you're living, your dining and your kitchen. On that first floor, you also have the opportunity to come into that same small foyer from your garage. So you can either come home, park in your garage and go up, or you can come from the outside. You then have your living, dining and kitchen on the second floor. And internally, you have a stair to get up to go to the third floor, which is our, which are your two bedrooms. So what you can see is that then we have a red garage here accessing these red units above. So each of these red get to the red, each of the darker blue get to the blue, all with that same layout. So everybody has an entrance either at the front of the building. You can see this yellow and red are two doors that are on the garage side or access from the end of the building or these internal passageways. So I hope I've done a little bit to help understand the way that this works. We find this to be a very sought-after apartment rental unit. Okay, so if I can get more specific, this is the, what I'll call the garage product as is seen from the front or the green side. You can see we've chosen a mix of stone, different hardy plank, AZEC and panels, I think creating what is a pleasant elevation, broken up with the different materials, as well as you can see those passageways going through the building. Within this product, there are 120 dwelling units. 96 of them are market units. 24 of them are the low and moderate units. The market units range in size from about 1,200 to 1,500 square feet. They are 44 foot 5 inches to the peak of the roof on the front side as required by your ordinance in compliance with the height as required in this zone. I do not have the benefit of the site plan, but they are in buildings of either 10 or 15 dwelling units. So this, I've shown you the larger building. This is a 15 dwelling unit structure. They also come in a 10-unit variety. So if we go to the elevation that is the garage side, again, you can see those passageways going through the building. I believe interesting architecture that carries around the entire building, articulated roof lines. And I think it's important, this keeps it at a scale that is not massive. It's broken up to be a smaller, more, you know, town-friendly or village center-friendly scale. So you can see here behind these trees, there are actually points of access to those upper dwelling units. And then either in these passageways or on the ends of the building are the other points of access. This is the end elevation showing the end doors getting up to those upper units and that the materials carry around all sides. Okay, so here is our Route 206 side of our 26-unit mixed-use building. You can see we've used the stone, the hardy plank, the AZEC, the different shake styles and clap sizes for the finishes here as well. We do have this signage band. We have a, you know, a nice arcade-covered area with a metal roof on it. And as I will discuss a little bit later, we have a significant amount of storefront glass, I think balanced well and it will provide, you know, what will be an attractive retail frontage for the Route 206 side of this building. Your ordinance does ask for an established bottom, middle and top. I think this structure achieves that. This structure is on this side, 49 feet to the peak. This is a subject of the variance that we are requesting. So the maximum height permitted in this zone is 45 feet. This structure is 49 feet. The quirk of the, this particular structure is in effect has two fronts. This is the Route 206 front. The parking side is also a front. Considering, actually discussing this with your planner and also taking the worst-case scenario, because of the grade that exists on the site, there's about a four-foot change between the front of this building and the back. Our, that's where really that 49 foot comes in. We are trying to maintain a building that has ample ceiling in the retail level to be sure we can maximize the options for tenants as they come in, nine-foot ceilings in the apartments. All of these cross gables that we see here are, I believe, 10 on 12. The architectural overlay does request that cross gables be a minimum of nine on 12. We'll go further into this later, but that back pitch, this hip roof going back is a four. The architectural overlay does request a six. So we are asking for a waiver on that. And, you know, as an architect, I believe that the granting of that waiver will not, you know, does not significantly impact what I think is a quality elevation and architecture that is appropriate for this, for this zone. In terms of dwelling units within this, there are 49 market units and 22 affordable units of the 71 mixed-use. 23 are one-bedroom, about 785 square feet and 14, and these are the market are 985 to 1,100 square foot two-bedroom units. If I may, this is just to provide the board with just an additional view. This is the 19-unit, the shorter version of that mixed-use building, which sits to the south of the main entrance. And this is the facade that you would see from the parking side. And you can see that we don't have that four-foot base that the Route 206 side has. So in fact, this is compliant, this elevation is compliant with the 45-foot height requirement. This is the side typically of what you would see, different points of access for the stairs and utilities, as well as the wrap of the commercial and the windows for the units above. We are proposing a over 5,000 square foot two-story rec center, which is in the center of the project. It's about 31 foot high. We've, you will notice if you had your architectural packet that we've considered the elevation of this a bit more. So we'll note for the board's understanding that this is not the elevation that I filed. We've since then considered, as we were rendering, we wanted to bring a more direct correlation between the character of the rec center and the units around. You can see we're using the hardy plank, we're using the stone, the metal roof, the asphalt architectural shingles. Again, I think creating an attractive elevation. This is directly at the entrance to the project. It's going to have things like a gym, a leasing office, lounge, games, media, a dog wash, some storage areas. My client is certainly going to put a lot of effort into making this have a sense of place and a place that you would want to live and the amenities would answer to that. Okay. This is, there was, there was a comment in the, your professional's letter, your planner, that there was not signage provided. And there was not. This has not been provided yet. This is the first time you are seeing this. Part of the requirement of the zone is that there would be a comprehensive signage package proposed. And that's what I'm offering to you this evening. We would ask that you would consider a monument sign to be placed at the entrance to the development, identifying the name of the development. This smaller sign would be at that cross-access between the office building and the, this proposed development. These, what we are calling here, wayfinding signage would be not only for discussions on where vehicles can go, but perhaps building numbers, wayfinding for the purpose of allowing not only the visitors that come to the community to know where to go, but also your emergency services and like that. So we're offering that the wayfinding signage could be to help people navigate around the site in a tasteful way. We are proposing two kinds of signs for the tenants of the retail and the mixed-use structures. This is allowed by ordinance to be 10% of each tenant's facade. We're offering a pin-mounted halo-style lit light, again, tasteful and appropriate for the structure. This middle one here is just, it's a little smaller because at the face of the arcade, the sign band is not quite as broad. And the last piece of the signage that I'm asking you to consider is that each building we'd like to have a building-mounted building number with unit numbers. Again, this really speaks to safety and understanding of where to go for various, well, again, for visitors, yes, but also for emergency services to get where they need to go quickly. If I may, I think that's my last image there. Put my favorite one up. Your wifi is telling me to say yes. Okay. To speak to the waivers that we are requesting, there is a maximum 75% window permitted in the retail facade. I will go back to that for a moment. We're asking, you know, the, we noticed for up to 100%. The point is, we're trying to really maximize. We felt that 75% actually began to limit that retail recognition. So we're asking that you would consider the balance of window that we're proposing here on this elevation, which will be in excess of the 75%. There is a requirement in the architectural overlay that says the sill of the retail should be 26 to 36 inches. Again, we noticed for that to be as low as zero. We have redrawn it to be 18 inches. We have found that our tenants like to have as much glass as possible. So we're asking that you would consider an 18-inch sill. And on the Route 206 side, obviously that sill is much further above your head. But again, this is part and parcel to. But again, this is part and parcel to the fact that we sit on a site that has a change in grade. Again, it's a waiver I feel, I, I would hope that you're comfortable granting because it's part of the overall architecture and it will help with that retail frontage, I think both of them. I did, as I mentioned, we are asking for a roof slope of four-on-12 or six-on-12 for a back pitch or a hip is required. There is a requirement that there be no more than three materials, textures, or colors on a facade in the overlay. We have more than that. We have, as I mentioned, hardy plank, architectural asphalt shingles, metal roof, AZEC trim. And we've provided in shake style and different claverts, right? I understand the essence of the, the requirements, to not get crazy, but I think we would ask that you would consider, that we would like to be able to have just a couple more creating the character that, that we have provided for in this rendering. In terms of, though, though it is not an architectural element per se, there is a requirement in the ASD overlay that says that you should have pigmented concrete. As Mr. Ford mentioned, we are having colored crosswalks and like that. And again, appreciating that this is a town center, there wants to be some tasteful character to the walkways. We would ask that you would permit us to use a standard concrete color. We do have a, a network of walks. They go through buildings. They are tastefully placed. There's a lot of landscaping. Doing them broom finish, I don't think, is the topic, but we would ask that you would consider waiving the requirement that they be pigmented concrete. We actually see that as a maintenance discussion. When it's pigmented, it fades, then it has to be replaced for a reason that would not match. So we'd like to not, ask for a waiver for the pigmented concrete. To go specifically to another comment that was in your planner's letter about LEED. We did, we do have a, a staff LEED professional who, I did consult as part of the design of this project, which is a requirement. We also did go through, and I don't know how much of that I should go into, I would defer to Mr. Maskey. I, I do have a scorecard with me. It's something that I'd like to discuss and develop with him to his satisfaction, which is the requirement. I've discussed many different opportunities for green technologies and green initiatives to be instituted. I found that LEED, though, though we will not be seeking LEED certification, which is not required, but we did go through the LEED scorecard process. What we found is that LEED for new construction, when you consider citing, we automatically get quite a lot because we're redeveloping sites, we're in an area that has lots of access to lots of different uses, we're walkable. So we're, we're, just by the fact that this is a redevelopment in a town center on a main artery, speaks a lot to, to setting LEED off. Things like bike racks, vehicle store, vehicle charging placements, low VOC paints, glues, all of that. My client already uses these, right? Energy Star appliances, these are all things that are regular to their construction practices. But this is certainly something I'd be happy to, to work out with Mr. Maskey to his satisfaction that I did go through a scorecard, but I'd like to go through it in greater detail with him. And in terms of architectural testimony, that's, that's pretty much it.
Just one question. Did you say you will have vehicle charging stations?
We will, yes.
You will? Any idea how many?
Um, I, I think I heard two or three, but again, this is something that...
They'd be accessible to all the residents?
Yeah, in the field. And then my client actually noted that four out of five of those, so 100 of those back units have garages, which will, you know, I know some of my people have the electric cars and they have to buy the thing to convert it, but that would be available in there as well.
Comments, questions from the dais?
I'll just ask just one and maybe just explain in why in your design that you're asking for the waiver on the roof. Is it to accommodate, to fit the height and giving the roof that you want? Is that the reason?
Well, it's, it's really, that's part of it, right? So if we increase the pitch, this is a 70-foot-deep building and it does create a lot of roof to have a six-foot pitch going back. So it, in part, is because of the height of the building. So I could achieve a six-on-12, bring that ridge line up, but then I would end up smushing my ceiling heights. It's my opinion as an architect that I'm not gaining anything by the character of the elevation by adding more roof, as much as I would be adding to the benefit of having higher ceilings within the structure.
Thank you. What are the ceiling, uh, ceiling heights?
What's that? So the residences each have a nine-foot clear ceiling. We have a 13-foot first floor to, to first floor residential, so you'd probably have, depending upon the way they finish the retail, an 11- or 12-foot ceiling within the retail, which again is, is preferred, so.
Okay. We'll open up to the public if anyone has a question of the architect. Is that a? No, that's it. Came with a hand wave. Okay. I think we're done for now.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. So one of the advantages of having a room full of engineers like Mike Ford is we've had some time to discuss some alternative access. So I'd like to end the evening with just some brief illustrations, albeit in pen, from Mr. Ford on some ideas that our professionals have been discussing.
Okay. And do we mark, need to mark those, Eric?
They're just for discussion or are they actually for testimony?
Are you proposing to introduce this, Mike?
Yes.
Is this already been, is this already been marked?
No, no. Can you hear me?
You got it.
Yeah. We were listening and I did a little sketch of an alternative.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay. Just something to try to get us. That would be, what, A?
AA.
AA? I can, I shouldn't have made it darker. Now, I'm not tall enough. What? Thank you. Okay, good. Yeah, sure. All right. Uh, what we heard from the board is the concern about this connection specifically and the mixing of traffic and pedestrian elements from the park-and-ride area. And what we came up with as a sketch is to take this connection and move it over to this location, so it'd be more of an access aisle here, taking it off of any through-traffic within the front of the element or even past this portion of the existing site where you have this park-and-ride. And this would be taking this parking, putting it along that access aisle, and then the same four buildings along the back, putting the larger one to the, to the south of the access driveway, and then the three smaller ones. This access would completely go away. This would be blocked off. Perhaps pedestrian access could be provided there, but it would be a circulation in this fashion. That's, that's the, the concept. And then the vehicular traffic would be through this south portion of the mall. We'd reconfigure this parking back here so that we have no net loss of parking on the, on the Amal Mall site. And then I don't know that it was discussed or mentioned earlier, but A9? When the applicant acquired the Amal Mall, they transformed it from what it looked like with this orange roofing to the left to what it looks like today with the enhanced view to the right. And part of those site improvements were not only focused on the building itself, but the site itself with improvements to the repairs, to the concrete walkway around the building, the parking area. But lastly, what I'm getting to is there was recently an introduction of speed humps in the parking area at this location, this location, and perhaps we can add some speed humps along this access aisle as well to try to provide some traffic calming, if you will. And this is all about, I think, trying to get some direction from the board because in discussion with the applicant in the audience, and you heard from Mr. Troutman, there was some extensive discussion with this neighbor to the north that was not productive because certainly our, our, our desire would be to have access to the traffic light as well. And to pursue that further, it seems like we anticipate it would just be that same dead Silence is really not good.
I guess we are all digesting the policy.
I guess one of the other, and this is, I didn't have time for this sketch, would be perhaps, you know, doing something with this access driveway, even perhaps off the end here, where it has some more turns in it to offer some, you know, more opportunities for traffic calming. It's not a direct route. But it's hard to balance that with transforming a driveway into, you know, an access through a parking lot. This is really like a, a main driveway today, and it seemed consistent with, you know, continuing that, to, to provide for that alternate access for this development.
Mr. Ford, what would happen if you just eliminated any access to that rear property and just forced everybody to make the right out onto 206?
The, then it would just be that people that want to head north on Route 206, and it's my understanding that it'd be difficult to get unrestricted access at Route 206 from DOT, they would just have to circulate around, I guess, Raider Boulevard, down Amal Road, back to, to, to continue on Route 206. That would probably be the method they would use. So, so that would be, and I perhaps defer to Mr. Troutman to... So that's... So I could have done this with just one blue line.
Would, would there be any possibility of some of those patients trying to make a U-turn in any other shopping centers, whatever, along 206, then to try to double back north? Or do you see them just making the circuitous route?
Well, yeah, your next, your next intersection south is Raider Boulevard. That's a signalized intersection. I guess perhaps you could make a left on Raider Boulevard, travel down Raider Boulevard a short distance by the, the theater and make a U-turn past one of the first islands in the middle there. Yeah. So that's, that's an alternative.
Okay, thank you.
That might be shorter. I guess if I had to do that, that might be my choice, rather than going through Walgreens.
The, what are we, you know, obviously, traffic engineers, what was the number of vehicles in his testimony? I don't recall, and I'm looking at, that would utilize the, that area going north compared to the other ones? What are, what are we talking about in numbers?
We're talking about in the morning peak hour, 38 cars exiting out through there and the afternoon 51 if the retail were to come to full fruition. That's all, a lot of retail traffic in there because retail rates are high.
Okay. So substantial, not, not five cars?
Not defined as, not significant in the definition sense.
What would be considered significant?
Significant increase in traffic is 100.
100. Unless, unless you're across 39.
I'm sorry.
Unless you're across 39 in line.
Just, in the revised plan you did, is there, I know parking is already a little tight in that front area. If you, if you eliminated the parking along the, the, the border, the, no, 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 keep going, along the, along the property line on the left?
Over here.
The top-left corner.
Oh, yeah, we are limiting that.
No, no, sorry. Correct.
About this?
Yes. So that you don't have people walking across the parking lot? Is there enough parking there to accommodate that and just use that as a lane of traffic?
My answer is right now, no. Yeah. I think from a practical standpoint, I've never seen a parking problem there in, but, but from a, you know, retail count number point that those spaces are needed.
And I know, you know, people use those for the, to run into the dry cleaner and...
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Ford, are you adding spaces in the back or are there spaces there now?
Here?
Drew them in, yeah.
Uh, I was just trying to get back, right now, there is some spaces in this area where I'm proposing the driveway, and I tried to get them back over here. And this would, this wouldn't be a drive. Right now, there's a driveway here and here. Yeah. Yeah, I, I didn't count spaces yet.
Yeah, okay.
But I think I'm close.
So it looks like you are not gaining any spaces in the back, are you?
I don't think that I'm gaining really any spaces, yeah.
Is it the board's desire to have Mr. Ford produce a more formal document than his...
His sketch.
His sketch? Or is the board not have an interest in this new proposal?
Or does the board want to sleep on it?
Well, I, I think the issue, I think the plan is to come back at some point in the relatively near future to continue the application. And I think rather than draw, dragging this on another X number of weeks before you all decide what you want to do, I think the question becomes, do you want Michael to at least put this sketch together and it doesn't preclude you from continuing either to say no or tinker with it? But I think at this hour and based on Michael's perfectly engineered drawing there, that you might want something a little more formal.
We would just, I, the sketch is really just to try to get some direction. If this driveway and this connection was an absolute no-go, then I'd go back to the office from here.
I, I think that you could provide any other alternatives for us to choose from, I think would be helpful, whether it be this one or anyone else that you could come, come up with between the next, next meeting to, to consider.
And I would, and I've indicated this to Mr. O'Grodnick, who is sort of tonight's fill-in, to pass along to Mr. Shemenowitz, et cetera, the desire of the board to continue to explore the Bottle King access issue. Obviously, we can't make them and obviously, we can't make Bottle King agree, but we'd like you, I realize Mr. Troutman's testimony was that he explored it at an earlier point in the discussions. We're now a little further along, so I think the board would like the applicant to at least continue to pursue that conversation.
Yeah. The only other thing I was just going to throw out there, and I don't know if this requires now township action, is whether going back out to the original proposed corner, but somehow make a hard right to cut in front of the, the park-and-ride, leading you right out to that traffic light, to that traffic signal.
Through the township.
Yeah.
Then you gotta move the parking, which could be...
Well, that's why I don't, yeah, I mean, it looks like there's drive space there. I just don't know, to make a hard right into that. Because that way, then you're, you're further east of where, again, the high school students are going to be walking in the morning, and at least now you have a traffic signal to make it easier for, for, yeah.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah.
Eric, I think, if you don't mind, this, this exhibit might be better because I'm... Eric, I think, if you don't mind, this, this exhibit might be better because I'm turning this into a two-way access aisle and, I would say fixing this, this is kind of a sharp turn now that's kind of operating that, and the township owns this property?
The township owns the property and-
We would turn this into the no-connection, just driveway into-
That would, that would get the, the traffic to the traffic signal by the post office and perhaps even help to enhance and improve the, the circulation around the, I mean, you would still want to keep this, these parking spaces here, though.
Yeah, I mean, there's still, there's still an issue with the, the, the school parking, you know, and using that as a, as a cut-through, but, but at least it's a little cleaner, you're not going through more of the retail parking area.
Right.
That might be an option.
Board want Mr. Ford to coordinate with Mr. Maske and Mr. Bellinger on that design?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I would ask maybe, yeah, concept or two and figure out if there's another way that those work.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
I think the answer, Michael, ultimately is multiple alternatives and see where we go.
Okay. The, the last one we just discussed seems like it's a good one if we can get us directly to the traffic signal and as far away or at the outskirts of the park-and-ride and the, you know, use of it for high school students today and eventually going back to a park-and-ride, for sure.
The other thing I would maybe consider is to prevent people from cutting through the development. The other way is almost making that exit a one-way, going, those people just want to go north on 206. Some people aren't cutting through to get to 206 the other way. I don't know.
Right out.
You know, people that are in-
It's only an egress.
So, people coming from the store, cutting through, and then want to cut through developments to go north on, south on 206. So, this way, it's only outward, not inward.
This?
Yeah.
Well, well, right now, the park-and-ride would serve as, as circulating through that way. So, you probably still need the ability to come in-
No, but the, the, you're saying development would be a one-way.
You can't access the, the residential site from that.
This development is only out.
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay. And then, what would be the disposition of this driveway even? Perhaps that driveway?
That stays.
That stays?
Yeah.
Okay. I think we've honed in on some concepts that sound like it's a, an improvement, a potential improvement for, for all concerned.
Yeah. We, we understand the limitations, and we know, and we appreciate your work, but it's, I, I, I just look, I'm really concerned about safety in that, in that, going through that parking lot. So, if there's another concept that makes that a little easier to work with, great. And, you know, if we could eventually get to the point where you can have good neighbors, then maybe, maybe that's even a better solution, but we understand your limitations.
We could, perhaps, we might be able to move the park-and-ride driveway at connection over far enough to take this parking here and move it on the other side, perhaps, and then whoever's parking there doesn't even, it's not along the access line. We'll, we'll look at that.
Let's take a look at it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. A9.
Sketch, A9.
Sketch, A9 represents a, a, a hand sketch, being creative engineering.
Are you proposing to adjourn?
No, we're looking to continue-
Continue, yes.
The application. Then you can adjourn. I think the proposal is May 2nd, which is formed through tonight, assuming your other witnesses are available and...
Are you coming, Michael?
No, it's going to be Ron.
It's going to be Ron, so tell Ron he has to come.
Tell him he's got to watch the video.
Any problems, any problems? Do you need a second for your witnesses?
We'll get somebody there if it's not Ron.
Well, my point is that it's not-
Make a second. Does that fit? All right.
Oh, yeah.
We're good.
So, Mr. Chairman, what we are looking for is a motion to continue this application through May 2nd, 2019, at 7:30, or whenever the matter may be heard. No further notice need to be given.
Thank you.
So moved.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Beeson?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Depp?
Yes.
Andrew Doherty?
Yes.
There's Ron.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.